I'm going to ask each of our panelists to give us a two to three minute exposition. We talked about some of the issues, we have labeled some of the problems, we know the concerns, starting with Inkechi Taifa. We're going to ask each of our panelists, and we'll go right down this road, Dr. Leviter, then Jasiri X., and then Dr. Mark Lamont Hill, Michael Cord, and then Dr. Umar Johnson. A two to three minute exposition on what proactive, positive thing we can do from where we are with what we have.
All right. Well, first of all, I just want to say that the youth of the nation represent the strength, the hope, and the future of people. It is clear, based on what everybody up here said also, that education and restructuring of values is key. I submit that if Raheem, you guys know we've used that name before, knew at one time in Africa that his ancestors performed intricate eye surgical operations, wouldn't he feel that he had nothing to contribute and had to engage and practice, you know, in the community? If Charmika knew that her ancestors ancient taught mathematics to the Greeks, you know, masterminded of, you know, the engineering of blood banks, refrigeration on a truck, the two last, all of those things, I feel that education is in fact key. But not just education to our ancient past, also education to, if Tyrone knew what the Godfather said about him, let us keep all of the drugs in the dark people, the black community, let them waste their souls away with drugs. If Charmika knew what the FBI said about her, that we're gonna stop the rise of a Messiah who can unify and electrify the community, we're gonna develop specific tactics, okay? Specific tactics to, so that the youth won't join a black group. If folk knew that they were descended from such a great and mighty people, great civilization, would they feel they needed to waste away, you know, with drugs? I have to give a little kudo to the administration as I come down there in about two minutes. If they're beginning to recognize a lot of the failed policies of the past, the mandatory minimum sentences where it doesn't matter the role of anyone in offense, it doesn't matter that Kimber Smith was pregnant when she was thrown in jail, didn't matter that her boyfriend, you know, threatened to kill her and her family, the only thing that mattered was the amount of drugs and the weight. And she received as a first time nonviolent offender 24 and a half years in prison. She is not isolated. Many scores, hundreds, thousands of people are wasting away in prison under these failed drug policies of the past. The administration right now is beginning to say, okay, submit petitions for commutation, let's let them out. The administration is beginning to say now, okay, let's make programs with respect to my brother's keeper, so that we can bring up this mentorship and the self-esteem and all of these positive things, so that the first thing you see when you turn on the TV is not equating criminality with black youth. So I say all of those things are key, positive values, education, and dismantling the failed policies of the past.
Thank you very much. Dr. Leviter.
I must say I misspoke earlier. I said the Department of Human Services has $800,000 coming in every year. My mistake. Because I can't even wrap my mind around 800 million. Every single year, 800 million dollars comes into the city of Philadelphia for at-risk children. Out of that 800 million dollars, 2 to 3 million is spent on prevention activities. Has anyone ever heard of Support Community Outreach Program? They fund in this city over 350 community-based organizations to do prevention work. So you have 797 million dollars going to place your children in foster care and in juvenile justice, and you have 2 to 3 million going into prevention. The reason why they can do that is because 10 years ago, the Department of Human Services Commissioner decided to do a way with an advisory board. So people who look like you don't sit down once a year, look at 800 million dollars and say, how should we spend this? What would the maximum benefit be? We need to change that. That's money that you can go after now. Simply insist that the mayor appoint the people of color to the Department of Human Services Advisory Board. That's money. The second thing is the silos we live in. The second thing is elderly folks have more of everything. We have more money, we have more time, we have more experience, and we have allowed them to put us in silos called senior citizens homes, apartments, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we're not sitting on that front porch telling those young men out there walking down the hall. And trust me, trust me, a senior female is more likely to accomplish a positive piece than anybody else walking this planet. We need to build peace. We need to find ways to get out of our silos, find someone with a front porch, sit there and say to those young girls, hey, love, he doesn't want your brain, he doesn't want your history, he doesn't want your knowledge, and he sure doesn't want your baby. What you need to do is move on. They need to hear that from us, who have lived it. We need to also make sure, you talk about special education.
And we have one more question.
They have special education, but they don't have tutoring. You ever try and get tutoring for a child in North Philadelphia? Reserve some of that special education money for what's really the problem, not having enough academic support, so that not only the children from masterminding, trust me, there are many, many, many gifted children who never made it to masterminding. All they need is a hand up and a way out. And if we don't do it and help them and provide for them, what are we doing here?
Thank you very much, Dr. Leviter. Something specific that we can do from where we are with what we have, Mr. Jasiri X.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Leviter. I mean, you took the first thing on my list, which was, you know, open your door and go out and begin to talk to young people. I mean, I think, sometimes I think as conscious people, we can make things too complex. Go and introduce yourself, how you doing? This is, my name is this. What is your name? Who are you? Where are you from? Would you like something to eat? Can I go take you to get something to eat? And then begin to develop a relationship with the people right outside of our doors. That's the first thing, is love. Beginning to spread love in our community instead of walking by. Secondly, when we started One Hood, we understood the idea of, of, of young people want to belong to something. And I'll never forget the day where we gave all of our students their One Hood hoodies, I'm usually wearing mine. And they were like, we can keep these? No, these are yours, these hoodies are yours. And then what they started to do was they started to wear them every class. Like, we didn't say they were uniform, that you wear every class, but they started to wear them every class, and they started to be proud because they were part of something. It doesn't take a lot, it's not like we went out and we said, okay, we're gonna start One Hood and we're gonna go try to get funding from some organization. We just began to go in our community and do the work, and then the funders actually came to us. The third thing is, our young people need money. They want to make money. And so we have to begin to find a way to put some money in their pockets, in their pockets, and go to pay. So in One Hood, we have videographers, we have producers, we have MCs, whenever they go do anything, they get paid to do it. They get paid to perform, they get paid to take pictures, they get paid, and because we're trying to get them out in the mindset of, if you have a talent and gift and you can develop it, you should be paid for it. We have to begin to invest our own resources that we have into our young people. And the last thing is, they want power. We have to find ways to empower them. And, and, and so, if it's, if it's an opportunity, whether it's to even speak in front of a group like this, we have to begin to find ways to put our young people up here. I saw, it's a sister from Philadelphia, who I have a great deal of respect for, named Jamira Burley, I don't know if some of you know the sister, she's a very powerful sister. And she just put a, you know, it's Throwback Thursday on Instagram, and she put a, a thing up of her speaking, you know, she was 17 years old, speaking to the media, just something like that, at that age, if you get used to it, it empowers you, it gives you a degree of self-confidence, you'll keep doing it. Now she's working in the community, she's going all over the country, she's doing positive things, because somebody gave her opportunity to empower herself. If we can empower our young people, those four things, we can get, we can get this done overnight, so don't take it long.
Dr. Mark Lamont Hill, something that we can positively begin to do from where we are with what we have?
I think that's a great question, because I think the thing we have to recognize is that we have plenty. And maybe we don't need more, but we have plenty. I think sometimes we focus so much on what we don't have, that we don't think about what we do have at our disposal. If one word comes to mind for me, it's organize. Organize. You know, it, it never ceases to amaze me how easy it is to get people to react to things. Even in Ferguson, we went down there, 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, they, they, they shooting us with tear, shooting tear gas at everything. Next night, more people out there, next night, more people out there. Getting people to do that is actually not as hard as you would think, is, is, is the opposite of what you would think. But once that's over, once the tear gas is gone, and the dogs are gone, and the police are gone, at least in the immediate sense, getting people to make phone calls.
Follow-up.
Getting people to organize, getting people to feed people, getting people to teach people, the everyday work of struggle.
The follow-up.
That's what is difficult, that's what Umar was talking about, we talked about the idea of, unless it's right in my face, right at this moment, and I have an immediate payback right now, sometimes we don't invest in. We have to love us enough to invest in us and to organize in us. There's a problem in the world today, to me, the biggest problem, I always say this, the biggest problem in the world today is there are too many people who don't do anything. And, and the feeling that, they kill our children in the street and we don't do anything, they steal elections and we don't do anything, they put our children in prison and we don't do anything, and when we do, it's after it's already happened. So for me, in a very concrete way, what we can do tomorrow, this stuff, we need more money for our schools, yes, but there are children right now whose reading levels drop in the summertime, because we not reading today. And we know their parents gotta work, we know their parents are in jail, but we not, we right here in this room, and when we leave here, we can read to people, we can, we can be mentors to young men. Before we can build a school like Umar's, which we should be working to build, we can be role models and examples right now. We know that our children are more likely to go to jail if they don't have mentors and big brothers. We know our daughters are more likely to get pregnant and drop out of school and get HIV AIDS if they don't have arts and music and thing. We can be mentors and coaches and teachers, we can do that work right now. It's not, instead of the work we demand from the government, we citizens, we deserve all of that. But we can organize and do the work that I'm talking about right now. And the police, lastly, they're killing us. They're killing us. And then when we protest them killing us, they kill us again. But, I don't know, I grew up down the street, I grew up on that part, 12th and 13th, right? We had roaches. And roaches will tear up your crib. But mostly when the lights is on, off. Soon as you flip the light switch, oh, one roaches do. They scare you, y'all know. The police are roaches. The police are, that is a quote, feel free to use it, I don't care. You all got the opportunity to put the light on every time you do cop watch program. Every time you break your cellphone out while they pulling somebody over, every time you drive down Roosevelt Boulevard, or you on 76, or you going down Broad Street, or you going down the wrong part of the right part of Germantown Avenue, and you see a young man pulled over, and, and the police is there, and you see the cop, and you're like, oh, that's a squad, he might not got his papers right. Yeah, his papers might not be right, but he don't deserve to get shot. So when we pull over and watch them, the light is on, we have to keep a light on them to prevent them from killing us. And they still might kill us. This ain't pie in the sky in the great fire, but it's gonna fix everything. But as a prisoner of hope, I know that the work we do, the struggle we do, works when we organize. And I conclude with six words, whenever I get around to see, I get inspired, accept your own and be yourself. We must remember that we are our own. As well, books say, we are each other's business, we are each other's heart, right? We are each other's magnitude and volume. This is your own. Being yourself means working and struggling for the collective, doing the work so we don't have to go to masterminding to be successful. So that you don't have to go to their institutions. We're geniuses before, as sisters say, we, we were doing this before they were even a, a human. Let's revisit that by accepting our own to be ourselves.
As the moderator, you get more promises than a deputy town on homecoming. Dr. Mark Lamont Hill said, I got six more words. And then I realized that he wasn't a major in math. And now, ladies and gentlemen, what can we do now with what we have from where we are? Let's hear from Michael Cord, Esquire.
You know, I had a whole lot I wanted to say, but Dr. Hill took much of it, because he laid it out, especially the last thing he said about us doing stuff before the people. Let me just break down what he meant. The first human being on this planet was the African, from the Nile Valley region of East Africa 200,000 years ago. No disrespect to the Caucasian, but they didn't come out of the Caucasian Mountains until 170,000 years later. That means they've only been around for 30,000 years, we've been around for 200,000 years. Having said that, and the sister near the end of the panel alluded to this, we've actually created all of the intellectual pursuits you can imagine, art, science, math, all of that came out of Africa. Can you imagine a little Jamal realizing that his ancestors did that? Shaniqua, her ancestors did that. So if we can put them in touch with their real roots, then they would realize who they are. If they know that their mother or father is a doctor or lawyer, then they figure they can be a doctor or lawyer. But your great, 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 great grandparents, ancestors, were even more than that. Let me get to the point in terms of solutions, because it comes full circle. What do we do, once we leave here tonight, what do you take from us here on this panel in terms of some practical solutions? The answer is reparations, but it's twofold. It's twofold. When I say reparations, I mean external reparations and internal reparations. When I say external reparations, I mean support and cobra, because that's the leading organization fighting for reparations. And I know some reparations, and I'm certainly one, disagree with me on the one point I'm about to make. I don't see money, cash, as part of it. And the reason why I don't, for two reasons. It's no amount of money in the world that you can pay me for the raping, for the robbing, for the pillaging. And, and, I'm a lawyer, and I'm a criminal defense lawyer, and I've done civil work. If you hit my car, and you damaged my car, and you gotta pay me $5,000 to fix it, once you pay me that $5,000, I gotta shut the hell up. I can't complain anymore. I'm never letting a white man off the hook. So it's no way he can give me a check to make me forgive him for what he did. So that's why money is not part of it. The other reason money's not part of it, and I'm embarrassed to say this, but if they gave us reparations tomorrow, the CAFAC man would have more money than actually got. And that's real. That's real. So, in terms of reparations, in 31 seconds, Nick, 31 seconds. So, I'll keep talking. In terms of the external reparations, join and cobra and become a member. In terms of the internal reparations, we have to understand the concept of unity without uniformity. Unity without uniformity. We all don't have to be Muslim, we all don't have to be Christian, we all don't have to be liberals, conservatives, but we realize the one thing we do have, that common denominator is our blackness. And although I'm not Muslim, when the honorable Elijah Muhammad talked about do for self, that's the solution. So the external reparations is making them pay for what they took, the internal reparations is us realizing who we are and where we came from, and then, there's nothing they can do to stop us. Thank you.
Our panelists and this director, we received a call from the attorneys for Raheem, Shaniqua, and Jamal. They're saying, can you use their name again? And now, ladies and gentlemen, our final panels, and then we will get to your questions. And then a little bit later, we have some more housekeeping for those of you who are getting continuing education credits and who want to understand more about tomorrow's activities, we'll be getting to that momentarily, but now, let's continue with Dr. Umar Johnson.
Before I give my recommendation, one thing I wanted to say, as it relates to the homicide rape, I was in Chicago last night, and I spent quite a bit of time up there. There was an article that came out, I think it may have been Associated Press that talked about the police in Chicago who were intentionally leaving armed guns on the subway trains. In Chicago as well as in Detroit, our brothers and sisters suspect that the police are actually behind the homicide.
This is how they're behind the bringing in a crack cocaine in the black community.
And one other thing, just to brief, just to generally redirect, things that we can do proactively from where we are with what we have. Thank you very much.
And one other thing before I give that recommendation too, we have to keep in mind that a lot of homicides, the killings that we see that are being assumed to be homicides, many of them are organ assassinations. Black people's organs in particular are in high demand because of our unique DNA structure and cell structure by virtue of our melanin. And if you believe for one minute that all of these healthy, young African-American males are just simply dying and being put in the ground with all of their organs intact, then you don't know half the truth. I remember Dick Gregory talked about how Trayvon Martin was missing some of his organs when they finally searched his body, and a lot of our funeral homes are a part of the underground market to sell black organs. So for those of you who are actually organ donors on your driver's license, you might want to rethink that, because you are a sitting target. Now, my recommendation is this. At the beginning of the year, I started an initiative to organize all the African parents in the country in the National Independent Black Parent Association. We need to do it right here in Philadelphia, the hometown as well. So before everyone leaves here tonight, I want to make sure you stop at my table with Sister Montreece right there, and make sure you sign your name, your phone number, your email.
Can you have a raise your hands if you need to?
Okay. Now, the National Independent Black Parent Association, seven committees, briefly. Special Ed Committee, to investigate special ed fraud, to investigate how many of our children are being put in special ed, how many are being put in full-time versus part-time versus itinerary, what is the average grade at which a black child in every school is being put in special ed, and how many of them are being put in special ed illegally. Second committee, School Discipline. We know that Philadelphia is one of the leading cities in the nation for school suspension as well as school expulsion. In fact, during the Interpol violence term, we led the nation in expulsions for children in middle school. And so we need to investigate that, because one of the reasons why our children are struggling academically is the teachers are not leaving them in the classroom long enough to learn. So we gotta have a discipline committee, then we gotta have a finance committee to investigate where the resources are going, the money. The school district's budget is a multimillion dollar budget. Now, how many black people have we seen to get the contract to put these surveillance cameras in, get the contract to provide the lunch, the contract to drive the buses, the contract to clean out the bathrooms? We're talking about multimillion dollar contracts, your tax money that we need to investigate. And then there's the policy committee to change the rules that disproportionately and negatively inflect black children. For example, your child lives in North Philly, but you want them to go to a school in West Philly because your child is academically, you know, astute and they need another school. Well, you ask the principal for lateral transfer, the principal says, well, it's our policy that children must go to school in the neighborhood. Well, that might be your policy, but that is not a state law. And we as parents need to understand that we can change the policies, because the policies are not the laws, and most of what's being done to our children in Philadelphia is not being done by state law, it's local operating procedure. And we can change it if we unify. The next committee, the next committee is the social committee, to do what? Help our struggling parents. I'm getting sick and tired of the single black mother being blamed for everything that goes wrong with the young black male. Keep in mind, that half, half of our single black mothers are not only raising children on their own, most of them are dealing with a potentially fatal medical problem, they're dealing with epilepsy, cancer, heart disease, stroke, many of them are on dialysis. We have to reach out and help those parents. It's not just they're always lazy, some of them can't because they don't know how long they're gonna be on this earth. And then we need to have a homeschooling committee. Why? Because a lot of black parents are getting their children taken out their home because they're homeschooling, but they're not filling out the paperwork correctly down at 401 on Broad Street, and as a result of that, the social workers are coming in and snatching their kids out the home. And we also need to help them homeschool, because a lot of them are doing a terrible job of it as well. And then we need to have a parent advocacy committee. The parent advocacy committee is gonna be a committee of parents that I'm gonna train, special ed law, regular ed law, so you know how to go into a meeting with another parent and support them. You're not the attorney like Attorney Court, you're just the advocate. But no black parent should go to a meeting by themselves, because you will be manipulated, you will be bullied. Okay, I speak as both a principal and a school psychologist, you'll be bullied, manipulated, and forced to do something you don't want to do. So you should always go to a meeting with somebody who knows the procedure. If they say your son can't come back to school if you don't put him on medicine, no law, they cannot make you put your child on medicine. We wanna kick them out if you don't put them in special ed? It's the parents prerogative that they wanna get their child evaluated for special ed. Most of what's done to our children are done to our children illegally. So special ed, discipline, policy, finance, social, homeschool, parent advocacy. So make sure you sign up before you leave today, that's how we get started.
Now, we're gonna start with some of your questions, I've got an array of them here, I will direct them to one individual on the panel, and then, of course, all panels have fair game, they wish to respond. We'll spend the next half hour, so for those who are listening, you're listening to AM 900 WURD. This is a live Town Hall broadcast emanating from the historic Church of the Advocate, located in the 1800 block of Dogon Street in North Philadelphia. And we are in the presence, not only of the members of the Philadelphia community, the Philadelphia African-American community in particular, but also with our esteemed panelists, starting to amite, left, your right, Ms. Inkechi Taifa, who is an attorney from Washington, DC, and the senior policy analyst for Open Society Foundations. Dr. Cleora Leviter, who was a former senior management officer for DHS and is now an education and motivational consultant. Mr. Jasiri X., a founding member of the anti-violence group One Hood, and also a hip-hop artist, directly to my right and over to the left from where you are observing, Dr. Mark Lamont Hill, a young man who is from Philadelphia and is representative of all that can be and can happen for those who apply themselves, and is the best of what we can be in the city of Philadelphia, and the host of HubPost Live and BET News and CNN. Attorney Michael Cord, self-described as the angriest black man in America. I would like to add to that probably one of the most brilliant men in America, color, notwithstanding. Last but not least, Dr. Umar Johnson, a national certified school psychologist, author of the book Psycho: Academic Holocaust Against Black Boys, and leading the charge to purchase college campus for young black males, so that we might be able to train them in the setting, conducive to their health. Let's give them all a round of applause. This is a question that is truly interesting. It would be directed, I guess, to Commissioner Ross, if he were still with us, but instead, I'll go ahead and, I'll direct this one over to Jasiri. And any of you, this is fair game for everybody, should black folks turn in their guns?
No.
Somebody out there said, what gun? Black folks, we know that there are often, you know, there are quite few movements, when we talk about reducing violence, we often talk about removing the firearms in our community, all of us talk about passing more gun laws, everybody beats that drum. Jasiri, as a young man and as an activist, should black people turn in their firearms?
No. I'll admit it, you know, I myself don't own or carry a gun.
And you have other people who don't own them as well.
I didn't say that.
Oh.
At the same time, I'm originally from the South Side of Chicago and live in Pittsburgh, a lot of people don't know that Pittsburgh, we have the poorest black community in the country, poorer than Cleveland and Detroit. I can't blame somebody, a young person, that grows up in an environment where they're literally under attack from the first day they come out of the womb by the system, whether it's economically, economically, whether it's, you know, their psychology, their mental state is under attack, or getting physically killed. The Mafumix Grass Roots Movement did a study in 2012, and 300 black people were killed by the police. where 300 black people were killed by the police, one every 28 hours. And so I feel like, I don't believe we should give in our guns. I don't think that's the answer. I mean, Chicago passed a law that basically bans guns in Chicago and there's still violence there. So it's not the removal of the gun that's the problem. The problem is we lack a knowledge of self and we lack a true understanding of who we are and where we come from. And so we utilize the gun. It's a tool. A gun is a tool like anything else is a tool. And if we properly understood ourselves, we could use the tool more properly. But because we don't properly understand ourselves, oftentimes we use it in a negative manner. But until the war is called off on us, I mean, that's the reality of war on us.
Education.
I don't think we should disarm if we know that there is a war on us.
I'll tell you, Taifa is going to have it and then?
No, no, no.
Because I want to know how you understood that question.
I'm sorry. I just want to say, I think we have to have a knowledge about history. Dr. Akinyeli Umoja, professor at Georgia State, I think University. I recently wrote a book called We Will Shoot Back. It's about armed resistance in the South. Tell us about the history of guns and the history of black people with guns. Robert Williams wrote a book called Negroes With Guns about Mumalo Alana back in the early 60s, fighting against the Klan. For those who know the history of the Republic of New Africa in Lebanon, Jackson, Mississippi in 1971, if blacks were not armed for self-defense, they would have been slaughtered. So I think going with the best, the end of what brother Jassiri X said, it's about your state of mind, it's your mentality. What are you going to do with it? Are you going to be killing up people that look like you? Are you going to be, you know? And I'm thinking by individual capacity again. All I'm saying is, the civil rights movement, the nonviolent movement in the 60s was largely successful to extent it was because there were people who still had their guns.
Dr. Mark Lamont Hill was going to help us get a little clarity on how that question might be answered.
First, I agree with everything everybody just said. I think there's been a commitment to disarming black people and poor people since the, I mean, middle part of 19th century. I mean, all these laws anti-gun, all this has been about disarming black people. You know, even what you see in Chicago right now, these struggles have been about taking guns out of their hands to people who might fight back. I do think we should not romanticize what it means to fight against the state. I mean, they got tanks, you know, they got headquarters. So I carry a gun, I own a gun. My .45 ain't going to stop the state from approaching, it might need them too. But it might keep other people away. But my understanding, yeah, the .45 doesn't.
Tell me all about three minutes, you ain't give enough.
But my understanding of the question was about gun turning programs. Should we be turning in guns in communities where we're trying to eliminate gun violence? You know, when they say you're turning in guns, that's a horrible question. Not should black people surrender their weapons that we own legally, but in terms of our community, we're trying to stop gun violence in the community, we're trying to stop gang violence in the community. Do these gun-turn-in buy-back programs work? Power 99, I've been doing it for about 20 years. I remember as a kid, they'd be like, "Turn in your gun, you get powerhouse tickets."
Typically, if you carry guns, you can probably get your own powerhouse.
To get people to give up guns. But I do see value in gun-turn-in programs and gun-buy-back programs because I do think that serves a different point. That's getting the guns out of hands of 16-year-old kids who would kill each other. That's getting guns out of hands for gang members. Now, we should ask very tough and legitimate questions about what law enforcement does with those illegal weapons once we get them. Because if they sell them right back to us again through the black market, then we just buy them. I can see the point. I'm not saying that they ain't doing it. I'm saying they are. So I'm saying, I do see the value in us getting the guns out of our children's hands. But I do think we need to be a little more thoughtful when we do once we get them.
So it's the context and the strategy.
I think context matters. I think that's a good question, if I understood the question.
Yeah, I think you're clear. You really helped us to put upon a point of the question. Let me ask you another question, and this one is very poignant. How many individuals in this room are under the age of 32? The reason I asked that question is because someone wrote in, "I think young people should be here."
Yes, right.
"Most of the attendees at this event are over 30 years of age. Do you plan on having young people lead this discussion in the future now?" I know from the perspective of WURD, not only do we have a program directed specifically at young people by young people, but we've had forums like this. I know the Justice Collaborative has an emphasis and a focus on this, but this was a general invitation that went out to everyone. And we know that most of our listeners are mature adults. But that did not stop anyone from bringing a young person. And many young people are here. I mean, I'm not under 32, I'm only 36 now, but... But let me ask the question to our panelists. What prevents or inhibits or impedes young people from participating in these types of constructive dialogues that we have from time to time? Leviter?
I'm sorry.
Endless, endless.
No, no, no. He got a .45.
Dialogue. And if we want our youth to get involved, we've got to lay out with them, participating. They have to take lead in terms of where we go, how we get there, et cetera, et cetera. We need to stand back and support. And I mean, have the conversation at every step of the way, turning it back to, "What do you want? What do you need? How can I help you? Can we make change together?"
Okay, Michael Cord?
I just want to pick up on what Mark said. Mark said "us," and the answer is "us." I always talk on my radio show and I start out by saying, "No disrespect to the old civil rights activists, but they're old civil rights activists. They got to be willing to give up the baton or it's going to be taken away." And as events like this take place, young folks assume that we're taking a page out of these old civil rights activists because we don't invite them and we certainly don't ask them what they think. So we need to be proactive. Every time we complain about what young people are not doing, we should complain about what we're not doing for them. That's what it's all about. But one quick thing I want to say about that whole issue regarding the gun. I take a page out of what Gil Scott-Heron says in his classic song called Gun. He said that when the other folks give up theirs, I'll give up mine.
Yeah, going back to young people, I think that IPW and the Justice Collaborative do an excellent job and they have these things called intergenerational dialogues. And one of the things that brings our young people, you have people like Jassiri X here, people who speak the language because I guess you're a little out, I don't know what you are. But anyway. Mark Lamont Hill, I mean, the bath that he did earlier, I mean, just absolutely phenomenal. That is what we need. We need to not just have a bunch of old talking heads all the time, but mix it up a little bit, you know?
I agree. I think having arts and culture is a big part of it. And I think, secondly too, sometimes, you know, as young people, man, we might, sometimes in an environment like this, not that we necessarily get intimidated, but we might want to speak a certain way and we might not want to be offensive to people in the manner that we speak, you know what I'm saying? But sometimes we don't speak as clean or as nice, you know what I'm saying, as somebody else might speak. And, you know what I'm saying? And so sometimes we might think, well, you know, our ideas, because of the manner in which we present them, won't be well-received or accepted, you know what I'm saying? And so I think, like you said, and I mean, you know, part of the reason I'm here is because, you know, I had a conversation with Mr. Daniels kind of about getting young people involved and he opened the door to me. And I greatly appreciate that he had that spirit and advocated for young leadership to stand up. So sometimes it's just as simple as, you know, making sure, identifying, whether it's culturally, who's popular to young folks in Philadelphia, who are the young youth activists and organizers on the ground here that are willing to come up and say something. And then, secondly, just not being offended if we come up here and might say something in a way, you know what I'm saying, that you're not used to hearing. But embracing that young person for having the courage to say it regardless of how they say it.
Dr. Umar Johnson?
I'll make it real simple. The youth know that the adults are scared of white people. The irony is that although the adults are more learned in the strategy of dealing with the system, the youth are more uncompromising. And it is difficult for the children of any culture to respect the adults when the adults demonstrate consistent fear in the face of oppression. We often look to our youth as if they are the problem. But in all honesty, they are the solution. Because at the end of the day, no matter how much the adults may know about the system, no matter how well we may be versed in the strategy, without the courage to confront it, it's useless anyway. But on the flip side, with the youth, irregardless of any ignorance that they may temporarily have, the ignorance can be blotted out with learning and education. But the one thing that they have going for them that we do not have is courage.
Now, there are a lot of, you know, one of the privileges you have when you're up front, you get to read the audience as a matter of countenance. And that statement, which is a provocative statement, of course, registered with a lot of people. There were people on the panel who stood up and he said that the youth understand that the adults are scared of white people and that some folks are still like they're still young. But Dr. Johnson, when you say adults, can you just give us just a kind of intellectual line that you draw that separates youth from adults?
I think that, generally speaking, somewhere around the age of 25, I would argue as a psychologist is where that transition is made. However, I would say that one ceases to be a youth and begins to be an adult politically speaking within the context of the subject. You cease to be a youth and you begin to be an adult once you begin to identify with the system of oppression and once you begin to exercise fears, anxieties, and reservations about dealing with the white man. And that person will get no longer a youth. Part of the definition of being a youth is willing to take risks. And I think that one of the biggest issues we've had in our community with leadership is we have a very poor system of intergenerational transfer of leadership. We had this conversation down at ASCAP this past weekend in Norfolk, Virginia. And we're the only culture I see, the only community where we still elect presidents of organizations well into their 70s and 80s. We do this in the church, we do it in the integrationist organizations, we do it in the nationalist organizations. And not only are many of the leaders of elder age, they're not even training their replacements. And we're the only ones who do that. And that's one of the reasons why I have so much profound respect for the Honorable Marcus Messiah Garvey because he's the only leader, major leader since slavery, who actually took up the task of training the replacement. And so we have a situation where the youth often feel that they have to push the elders out the way because they see that they've lost their effectiveness. And let me say this briefly. The reason why elders have trouble giving up leadership, I understand it, it's related to the psychological castration of the black male ego. Because we're not allowed to be men in society. We're not allowed to compete the way the white man can compete. In those few spheres of life where we are allowed to be men, the church, the organization, and the home. Where we taste a little bit of what it is like to be a man with power, we take it to excess, we abuse it, and we become dictators. I don't think we'll ever rectify this problem. And I think it's going to take elders to check the elders. It's not the youth. It's the elders who have to say, "Listen, you've been running this church for 50 years, but the gallows are empty now. That young brother, you got to give him an opportunity because if not, you're going to lose the whole church." So we have to look at how the youth, it's because the elders are scared of the youth, but they fail to recognize that the elders still have a role though. You don't throw them away. You need the elders for counsel and the youth for rule. Have the youth out front. And until we do that, it's going to be hard to reattract our youth to being our organizations when they see somebody old enough to be their great-grandfather as the president.
Thank you very much, sir. How many of you have enjoyed what we shared? Let's talk. Folks, we invite you to make welcome to this podium a man who is truly legendary in the civil rights community and close to the heart of Philadelphia, Dr. Ron Daniels, the president of the Institute of Black Wealth.
Brother, as we haven't forgotten about you because you're supposed to be on the program too, but Brother Nick, it was appropriate that me, that I come and say a few words now. Particularly first and foremost, to thank you so much. First, brother, to the panel, let's give the panel a big round of applause. To thank you so much for that generosity. I've been on this struggle for a long, long time. And I remember when I was much younger than I am now. When I went to my first NAACP meeting. And I heard him say, "Freedom is not greed." And so the investment is important. And sometimes we don't ask, we don't want to ask because, you know, it's difficult. People do have hard times. But the fact of the matter is, as Brother Umar has said, and as a number of people have, we do have the internal resources.
Yes.
We have done. And we in the Institute of Black Wealth 21st Century function of what we call guts and faith. A lot of times we do things, we don't know how it's going to happen. We just step out on faith to get it done. And so tonight, our faith has been vindicated because all of you were so kind enough to make a contribution. Give yourself a big round of applause. Now, very quickly, I just want to say a few words. First and foremost, I just want to give a quick shout-out to Sister Pam Africa, she's in the house. Another friend of mine, I've known him and all of you probably know, everybody knows him. I've known him for many, many years on the staff of Congressman Gray and others. He is the consummate trench politician. He goes and gets them. He knows how to get things done. He's got a book. He's kind of given me a copy of it. Please give my brother Ducky a big round of applause. I want to quickly ask us, I mean, this brother Nick T. V. R. O. He's been on the radio. He's been on the radio. We instantly hit it on. This is a year later since we did the first town hall meeting. He is just so, I think Brother Ximini was saying, he and Jassiri, he's just so smooth. And he has that sense of humor, which is brilliant. Because everybody can be funny. So that's a sense of him. So give him another round of applause. That's a word. I mean, this is so important because a part of what we're doing is black people. Brother Ari, out there, talking to you. What we're doing is black people. If we are going to rescue ourselves, is to have respect for our institutions. And WURD, some of you know or knew, and I'm not going to say know because his spirit still lives, Dr. Martin Lomax. Gave his life. I mean, if we had more, I mean, earlier, Jaziri was talking, he referenced a couple of the hip-hop artists. Some of them are now billionaires. If they would just emulate a half of what Dr. Lomax did in terms of contributing to our institution, look how much further, as the old folks would say, how much further down the road we've been. This man gave his life. And a part of his life was this institution, W U R D. We have to sustain it, we have to work with it, because not every radio station is coming into this community and to hear and have these kind of Town Hall meetings. That's a sense of commitment, that's being of the race and for the race. We have a whole lot of people who are of the race. But here lately, we got a lot, a bunch of folks who are not necessarily for the race. This is not about cosmetic blackness, this is about authentic blackness. People who are of the race, let's give word, another big round of applause. And I also want to talk about continuity. Because the reality is, when you're on the radio, as Brother Nick is, and I do a little hosting every now and then too, you know, on the radio, everybody's a revolutionary on the radio. Everybody can solve every problem on the radio. Then you say, "Well, Sister, where's your organization?" "Well, I, you know, I am." "Brother, what's your organization?" "Well, I got..." I mean, this is hard work. And we gathered one year ago to have a Town Hall meeting to deal with the issues, really, with a core of organizations, healing organizations, because we need healing in our community. It's a blessing to have the Alliance of Black Social Workers be a part of us, as a healing organization. Black Psych Conference of America, the National Association of Black, or A D Society of Black Psychologists, you know, the Blacks in Criminal Justice. These are black professional organizations who have decided that they're not just about being professional in terms of enriching themselves. And we don't begrudge anybody making a good salary. But they've made a decision that they're wanting to give back something to their community. And what they give back is their craft, is their skill, is their cultural sensitivity to healing us as black people. Let's give them a big round of applause. When we gathered last year, and I said this on the radio, people say, "Well, you have a town, what's gonna happen next?" Well, what happened next was, they helped to build a collaborative. And what does that mean? And I think my brother, my brother Cord, it's Cord, Michael Ford spoke to that. Operational unity, see, that's back in the day stuff, right? I mean, I can connect with that right away. And so we call it the collaborative. Because the point is, the difficulties we face as black people in the community, I call it a state of emergency. We are in a state of emergency in black America. We're being killed. We're killing ourselves. And that killing is not just in terms of the physical death, it is the mental death and destruction of our people. It is genocide. But in order to recover, and we will recover, we cannot do it singularly. It will not be a heroic effort by Ron Daniels. It will not be a heroic effort by any one organization. It will take all of our organizations. And here's the key. It doesn't mean you have to give up your sovereignty. It doesn't mean you have to give up your identity. You can still be the whatever you are. But the point is, very often, Sister Lois referred to it, and let me just say quickly, I've gotta give her another round of applause. Give her a round specifically. Because they understand they are the poachers. And they went sweating, and the emails flying back and forth, and worrying, and all this stress and strain. I mean, you know, it's hard out here working for black people. Everything, because it's hard, but that's all right. They do it because we have, like we say back in the day, what? An undying love.
That's right.
The point is, we can and must work together. And so if we combine our skills, our talent, and our resources, we can compromise each other instead of competing with each other. So what they've been doing all year, they didn't quit after the last Town Hall meeting. They kept working after the last Town Hall meeting, pulling organizations in to create this Philadelphia Regional Justice Collaborative. And that's why tomorrow is so important, because tomorrow is the next phase of it. Because they want to create, have, somebody... I took notes. I took your recommendation, Brother Nick, I took your recommendation. Now, because I want to make sure we captured that, because that's gonna be a part of an action agenda. Doesn't mean that we can do everything, as Brother Mark Lamont Hill said, and so many things. People have said, "Sometimes it is the most simple thing." Among other things, how do we learn from each other? We are geniuses, so how do we learn from each other? So we're gonna learn from each other tomorrow, and then we're gonna come out with an agenda. But the most important thing is, there are organizations out there right now, in this audience, who are doing great work in the community, but we're disconnected from each other. So the challenge is, we want you, and there's a table back there, we want you to go back inside and say, "I'm willing to at least try being a part of the Justice Collaborative." Let me tell you what that means. Don't meet every day, because people get tired of meeting. I mean, you can meet as often as you want to, but we just ask, at the national level, that you meet every three months. Just every three months. Come together and share information. "What are you doing?" "Oh, I didn't know that was happening. That's happening. That's happening right in our community." Right next to you. You didn't know it because you're not connected to the person next to you, or across town. So we're asking you to come together, because we just meet every three months. Largely around criminal justice issues, anti-battles issues, but at the end of the day, this is all connected. This is all connected, so it's all about us dealing with us to overcome these things. Let me just conclude with another quick note or two, just in terms of what I've heard. Because we say that the state of emergency in black America is time to heal black families and communities. And that takes two levels. It is, and again, my brother Cord spelled it out, it's internal and external. It's first and foremost, what can we do for ourselves? And Brother Umar, many, many years ago, I wrote an article saying, you know, "What if we put Christ back in, or what if we boycotted Esmus?" Esmus, I didn't say Christmas, Esmus. Because that's become the commercial corruption of Christmas is Esmus. And the demand for reparations, and I'm a staunch man, folks know me, we doubt the reparations. If we were to, in fact, cut off the economic bloodline of this capitalist scenario, they would beg us. So a part of it is, what can we do for ourselves? Quickly, Trayvon Martin, Florida, I don't know organization, and the social workers and a couple other organizations joined in. We said, "Look, it's easy. This is not necessarily a voting question, though voting's important." You know, we need to let Mickey and many play with themselves for a while. If we had been able to exercise economic sanctions, we'd spend billions of dollars in Florida on recreation. You want them to change those laws? You want to challenge the Koch brothers? They're bad, but they're not as bad as us if we could have put our money together and choked the industry of the reparations, that they would have come banging with us. They would have changed the standing-around law that killed, was responsible for killing Trayvon Martin. So that economic power in our hands is so incredible. That's just in our hands, and we can utilize. And then, yes, we have to challenge the other institutions, the agencies. Because what's been spelled out here by my sister here, and this is, this doesn't get talked about enough. How many agencies pimp off of the black community? I mean, institutions out there, there's a problem, and there's a program to solve the problem, but the people who run the problem, run the agencies largely do not look like us. They are experts and so forth and so on, and they're making millions and billions of dollars off our pain and off our misery. We need to confront that. There was a concrete suggestion made here tonight. Eight hundred million dollars being allocated, and only two to three million dollars for prevention, that tells you something. We can do something about that. We can march on a mayor, ask the mayor, do whatever's necessary to change that. So we have to challenge those agencies. But we also have to also challenge the government. My sister, you said something tonight, and I just laughed. Because this generation doesn't even know what the C D program is. Comprehensive employment and training act. And back in the day, Ari, as you remember, you know, we called it CHOPRO, Initiative Reform Program. Man, we don't do reform stuff. Because see, the summer, they would say, the summer's getting ready to get hot, so they would come out and they'd create some summer jobs programs. We have no jobs in the black community. We have economic underdevelopment. And yet we pay our tax dollars. And we should demand a reinvestment back in our community. We cannot do it all by ourselves with our resources. We should mobilize and organize it, but we have a legitimate demand. There ought to be public works programs. We ought to be able to put young people to work. Because if you have a job, good jobs with good wages would do as much as anything to snub out the so-called left aside in our community. And I close with this note. And that is that, and this has been hit on too, question of culture. Dr. Mylana Keringa said it, I don't know, 40 years ago, the key crisis in black life was the culture crisis. Cord, as you once talked about it, that's the essence, that's the beginning of the so-called black history, was the miseducation of the Negro. You don't know who you are, then you might do anything. It was alluded here today, Mark Lamont Hill talked about the disposability. We see ourselves as being disposable. We can correct that. We can correct that in our churches, in our fraternities, in our sororities, in our homes. We have to rehabilitate ourselves as to who we are as a people. We built the pyramids. We created the first, the first multi-genius in the person to be most... That's in our DNA. We don't say that because we want to have a sense of superiority, it's a fact. So therefore, we must make culture a key base, not because we want to bathe in it, because it becomes a basis for action, becomes a basis for rescue and restoration of us as a race, and we need to be restored as a race, and we will. I can conclude by simply saying, we gotta struggle, we gotta work. I encourage you to please be a part of this Philadelphia Regional Justice Collaborative. Those of you who can't come tomorrow, and I'm sure you'll get the information, sacrifice again. Come, here's the registration, so sacrifice, write a check, come and be there. You'll get a continental breakfast, and there's a lunch as a part of the program. But the most important thing you're gonna get is, we will turn to each other, we will embrace each other, we'll learn from each other. And we will also commit to struggle, because if there is no struggle, there is no progress, and we intend to win. A new to continue now.